Interfere, yeah. Yeah. Right. Like all narrow, I was like. Yeah. Oh. Design. Spacing. Face. Narrow slot. So it's. The base. Then now it's like. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. But if you have been like. Requested. Real spot. Oh, they're. They're just. They're like. See? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's. Oh, thank.
Okay. We see will not be speaking or cheering.
Okay. Them off.
Cute. So how many?
I don't. I don't know yet. Haven't gotten it.
Still getting.
Peoples are still signing up. Okay. I can. This is going better than I had thought.
I believe we are experiencing technical difficulties. I would like to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council regular meeting. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, Lord. Help us to see beyond the narrow limits of our words and deeds so that we may fully do your will. Grant us the patience to listen, the ability to deliberate, and the wisdom to make decisions that are fair and pleasing in your sight. Help us to remember our goal is not to control, but to serve the people. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Olson?
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Member Berantine?
Here.
Member Cuesta?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
And Mayor Protem Russell?
Present.
All six present.
Moving on to agenda item five, consideration of minutes of the previous meeting. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Actually, I believe, and I don't know if this is just on the paper packet, that 11C2 is missing. So. Is it on the?
It's present on the electronic.
Okay. All right, so if it is present on the electronic, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last meeting. Please vote.
Point of order, does it being on the electronic version just automatically make it changed, or should we just make sure that the change is made?
Okay, can we?
Verbally.
Okay, can we make sure the change is made verbally?
Okay, so I just need to pull up. So 11C2?
11C2.
So 11C2, a motion was made. A motion to table this agenda item until it can be discussed during an executive session. The motion was made by council member Berantine, seconded by council member, or Mayor Protem Russell, and the vote was six zero.
Okay, thank you.
So I apologize, I don't know why that wasn't in the printed packet, but it's definitely in here.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
All right. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, and can we vote to approve as read? Into the record? Please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item six, recognition of scheduled public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Lynn Ann Husing. Welcome, Ms. Husing, and if you could give your name and address before you begin your presentation?
Yes, my name is Lynn Ann Hizing. My address is 9884 Fairwood Street, actually in Roxborough. I'm here representing Severe Weather Shelter Network tonight.
Thank you very much. It's good to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Mayor Protem Russell and distinguished members of the Inglewood City Council, I am Lynn Ann Hizing. I'm the executive director for Severe Weather Shelter Network, providing emergency shelter for your homeless constituents in Inglewood. Thank you for this opportunity to address a number of concerns that have been raised over the last two community sessions. I've, um, Severe Weather Shelter Network is an integral partner with Giving Heart and a member of the Change the Trend Network here in Inglewood, seeking to engage the community in constructive dialogue regarding homeless concerns. Severe Weather Shelter Network was founded out of a county collaboration in Jefferson County called Heading Home in 2013 with a goal of preventing death and life-changing injury due to freezing temperatures. We've been sheltering between October 1st and April 30th each season since then, and are now concluding our sixth shelter season, currently providing emergency shelter in the Inglewood-Littleton area, Lakewood, and Arvada. Severe Weather Shelter Network has registered a total of 375 individuals for our shelter network this season. 125 of those individuals are living in Inglewood between Inglewood Parkway and Bellevue. Individuals experiencing homelessness in Inglewood have been here for many years. Most have grown up here, gone to school here, had jobs, and families in homes here. The reason that they're still here is because they consider Inglewood their home. We believe it would be cruel and inhumane to send them somewhere else where they would be at a loss to know where resources are, how to access those resources, and more importantly, where they might be safe. Shelter resources in Inglewood are extremely limited. Family Tree and Gateway Women's Shelter provide a total of 45 shelter beds for women and children escaping domestic violence. Kami spoke with you two weeks ago regarding Hat Force as they provide motel vouchers in partnership with Giving Heart and Severe Weather Shelter Network on severe weather nights. Severe Weather Shelter Network in our south rotation, which is here in the Inglewood-Littleton area, provides emergency shelter for up to 35 individuals when overnight temperatures are projected to be 32 degrees or colder with wet conditions, or 20 degrees or colder with dry conditions. These are considered life-threatening conditions. We began partnering with Giving Heart when they were still renting space here in the civic center. Together, we discussed the necessity of creating a warming site, always being concerned with safety and the experience of our surrounding neighbors. It is a fine line to walk. I want to clearly describe our structure and process so that we are all on the same page moving forward. Our south rotation host sites are in Littleton because we do not host in what we call the camping zone. We do not invite Inglewood churches to host, realizing that if they opened their doors at night, that our homeless neighbors would take up residence on their property during the day, becoming a nuisance. Our guests are not welcome anywhere they go, frankly. There is no safe place in Inglewood for them to wait for shelter outside of our warming site. Warming sites are located in the camping zone because our guests must get themselves to that location in order to be transported to the host site. Transportation is very challenging for our guests. The warming site has been centrally located within the community so that all guests have an equal distance to travel. Our guests are regularly reminded that they are not to show up at the warming site prior to 6:00 PM in order to avoid being a nuisance or being ticketed for loitering. Guests are required to stay inside upon check-in. We load vans in a staggered schedule in order to minimize the visibility of our guests for our surrounding neighbors. Safety is one of our primary concerns. We have worked together with law enforcement and service providers to put together an annual registration and screening process that allow all of our guests to be registered completely. Each year, guests have a CBI background check completed in which they are looking for violent offenses against persons in the last year. If they are not a good fit for us due to violent offenses, our partners will assist homeless neighbors with other sheltering options, usually downtown. I invite you all to join us this Thursday, March 22nd, for the community forum that will be hosted here in this building. More information about what we are learning and how we are working toward homelessness will be shared that evening. And additionally, I invite you to Giving Heart and/or Severe Weather Shelter Network on a shelter night to see how it is that we work and function. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hizing. Are there any questions? Councilmember Berantine?
Thank you very much for coming this evening. I appreciate it. Are you a volunteer or are you compensated by this organization?
I'm a paid person.
Are you paid just by this organization or by several of the organizations through this network?
Just Severe Weather Shelter Network.
Is the severe weather, is that just through under Love Inc., or is there other organizations that are doing the severe? Whether, this, but you've got to come up for an acronym for that because I think the.
SWSN works.
Okay.
We are our own 501(c)(3).
Uh huh.
Under the oversight of Loving Littleton for about three years, and came out from under that in our own 501(c)(3) a year and a half ago.
So there isn't another one of those like in Lakewood or anything?
No.
It's just that one that's under Loving, which is the same organization?
We are not.
That Giving Heart goes under. Okay.
We, yeah, we are no longer under Loving's oversight.
So what are you, you're your own standalone now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Hizing. Our next speaker this evening is Jeff Frazier. Good evening, Mr. Frazier.
Good evening to you, Mayor Protem, council. Hope you're all well this evening. It's nice to see a good turnout here. I am here to address the curious occurrence that occurred at the last council meeting on March 5th. Late in the meeting, when the city's presentation of auditing the Inglewood Environmental Foundation and the McKellen Reservoir Foundation came up, to the surprise of everyone watching, and I think most of council, member Berantine, and I believe seconded by Mayor Protem, moved to go to a closed-door executive session. This was a surprise. From what we could gather during the public meeting, it was discussed that member Berantine and Mayor Protem had engaged in what seemed to be a multi-year, essentially secret investigation of these two city entities. A complaint was filed with the Arapahoe District Attorney back in January of 2016. And more than two years later, you haven't mentioned this closed-door investigation to the rest of council. The members contacted and met with the district attorney and the city attorney, and also received a district attorney report, which I corralled and have right here, which, it's 25 pages of interesting material, but the long and the short of it says, "I have reviewed information provided to the district attorney's office. In the above-mentioned matter, I have assessed the provided materials along with discussions had with past and present city employees, did not amount to evidence that would support a criminal investigation." Asking city staff about these matters also violated the standard that this council's been held to for a long time of the rule of seven, meaning that when you're speaking with a staff member, you need to pull all council members in to be involved in that process. I also note that the DA at the time only gave this report to, I believe, two council members. The same one I remember at a meeting months back, there being a fundraiser advertised at one of these meetings for. If you thought there was a problem, why not share that with the rest of council so it can be addressed as a body? Why the secrecy? As a frequent champion of transparency, council member Berantine didn't want this secret investigation that resulted in zero findings of criminal conduct to be public. And the city's planning to audit these foundations, and if there's a genuine issue that should be addressed, certainly that should happen. The excuse of this being a legal matter was also provided. Even if there were laws broken, which there's no evidence of, as the report says, it's passed the statute of limitations, so there will not be legal proceedings. So there's no need for an executive session based upon pending legal matter because there can't be one. So let's state the issues in public. Why the cloak and dagger? Is this a fishing expedition to find something to try to crucify city employees with? Even though this investigation revealed no, no findings of any laws being broken? Did you want to find a reason to point the finger at city staff? Just like you've pointed the finger at a Christian service organization that's literally doing God's work in our community? Have you not learned your lesson from 2006? When you spoke with an Arapahoe DA for a personal matter which resulted in that DA being publicly censured by the Colorado Supreme Court? To me, running a back-channel investigation of city entities without notifying the rest of council, the city or the citizens, seems like an abuse of power, and it seems like that should be investigated. So to the rest of council, I don't know how you're to trust each other when information's not being openly shared. I encourage you all to not go along with this sort of nonsense, as Inglewood is paying more attention right now than ever before. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Frazier? Seeing none, thank you for your comments. Our next speaker this evening is Dave Cheedle.
Did you miss one?
Yeah, at least.
Did I see?
No, Dave. Stephanie came and took some people off of the list.
Good evening, Mr. Cheedle.
Good evening.
Would you state your name and your address for us, please, before you? Thank you.
Dave Cheedle, 30-year resident of District 3, 3706 South Tacoma, here in Inglewood. My wife worked 16 years at Swedish Hospital as an RN. I'm a former teacher in the Inglewood Public School Systems. My kids were born and raised here, K through 12, et cetera. It saddened me to have to speak at the last meeting, but the public record needed to be corrected on a number of statements that were made. In response to the last meeting, rather than humbly consider the honest information that was shared, the proprietor of those statements chose instead to double down on misinformation that she admitted herself to be unreliable. So it saddens me to have to stand before you yet again tonight, along with other speakers who will follow, in yet another attempt to correct yet more misinformation about the policies and practices of Giving Heart. One does not have to agree that responding to human suffering with compassion is a good thing, nor does a person have to agree with any of the practices or policies of Giving Heart. But what all of us should agree upon is that in the realm of public discourse, honesty counts. Statements made by elected public officials should be subject to fact-checking. To that end, at the last meeting, council member Olson expressed her concern about misinformation, and she made a formal council request for clarification on the accuracy of some very specific items. For the record, I have submitted a document addressing a half a dozen or more very specific pieces of misinformation that have been spread at recent meetings. I will not go through each item now, but I do want these items on the record. One of our concerns at Giving Heart, in fact, probably the major concern at this point in our life as a young ministry, is the picture being painted of us as indifferent to the concerns of our neighbors. In truth, every time an issue has been brought to our attention, we have attempted to do our best to address it, and the Inglewood Police can confirm that we have had conversations with them, and we are working on the issues as they come to us. So imagine our surprise today to read in an Inglewood newspaper story the following. According to the story, at-large, city council member Rita Russell, now Mayor Protem, met with business owners on our block in 2017 to talk about their concerns. Also, we discovered an email suggesting that there have been multiple meetings between Russell, Berantine, and businesses on our block. My question is, why? If the concern for addressing these issues is genuine, why was Giving Heart never invited once to even one of these meetings? My first request of council tonight, I would like a list of every such secret meeting that Giving Heart was excluded from, and an explanation as to why we were not invited to attend and hear the concerns directly, and we were not allowed to work collaboratively with the businesses towards practical, specific solutions. Further, I would like the record to show that neither Mayor Protem has, or Berantine, has even once met with Giving Heart Day program directors to review our policies and practices or to personally share concerns. A year ago, I stood before this council and invited everyone to come visit. Sure enough, two of the members mentioned showed up on a Saturday night while I was setting up for a church service. The meeting lasted about 20 minutes and was bizarre. Councilmember Berantine did far more talking than listening, and she left me feeling confused and dazed by her bigotry and aggressive attitude towards me and the homeless community. Please note, neither of them have ever returned even once to actually sit down with the directors who will be speaking in a few minutes for themselves. My second request is this. We do want to meet with our neighbors on the block. If there are still any businesses willing to meet with us and who have not been too poisoned by previous secret meetings with the two members mentioned, then we would like to meet with those businesses in a meeting mediated by one or two members of this council. Because the Inglis homeless, the Inglewood homeless reside in all four districts, it makes sense for the mediation to be conducted by an at-large member, perhaps Martinez or Wink, but council member Olson would be a logical choice as well. But because of the bad history and lack of trust between us and the two members mentioned, we feel it reasonable for the meeting to be mediated by a more neutral member or team from this body. Finally, I'd like to make an observation. A marijuana dispensary or a local bar can have negative impact on the neighboring businesses, and the same is true for a homeless ministry. It turns out that our block has all three. But do note that we are the only one of the three trying aggressively to get folks into rehab and recovery programs. We agree that concerns raised by any business about the people they draw should be calmly and seriously addressed as best as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cheedle. Are there any questions? Councilmember Berantine?
Your sign in front of your door says that you're open on Tuesday from, I think, about 10 to 3, and on Saturday evening for maybe about a total of six hours, five hours altogether. Is, are those the only scheduled hours that you have for Giving Heart aside from the Severe Weather Network Shelter?
Correct, and by appointment.
All right, thank you. Oh, and do you receive any compensation from Giving Heart or any of the organizations under Loving?
Me personally, I'm a pastor of missions from Faith Community Church in Littleton. But I'm the resident and the ministry is mine in Inglewood, but I'm on staff as a mission pastor.
Do you receive any compensation for any of the organizations listed under Loving?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
Thank you. Well, Giving Heart is.
Thank you very much.
Nothing from Giving Heart.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cheedle. Our next speaker is Donna Zimmerman. She will address council regarding Giving Heart. Good evening, Ms. Zimmerman.
Good evening.
Can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Donna Zimmerman, 4358 South Broadway. So this will serve two purposes, an introduction and an invitation. I am Donna Zimmerman, program director of Giving Heart for the past two and a half years. I sit at the table weekly with Change the Trend Network. I am also the Giving Heart warming site coordinator for Severe Weather Shelter Network. I am not a resident of Arapahoe County. I drive 56 miles three times a week to invest into homelessness in Inglewood. I am also a small business owner in Jefferson County where I reside. From the past business experiences, I understand the concerns of business parking and customer retention. I have had numerous conversations with the owner of Gecko Vapes about parking and related issues. I believe that there is no intentional disrespect about parking in front of our Giving Heart storefront. I have heard many statements for and against the work of Giving Heart. There have been harsh tones, short-sighted views, and deliberately formed opinions of Giving Heart developing from outside of our doors, and without proper verification from the Giving Heart staff. By standing on the outside analyzing the small percentage of what goes on as an overall judgment of Giving Heart, I believe there is an absolute distortion of the facts and the larger picture of Giving Heart. I cannot say I've had the opportunity of giving any of the members of city council a tour of Giving Heart on South Broadway. If you were to call me, email me, or walk into the center, we most certainly could talk about the barber attack with a previously banned guest. We could talk about the efforts on severe weather nights. We could talk about the efforts on severe weather nights to reduce visibility of our guests on the front sidewalk, or the policy we implemented on sheltering nights of guests remaining inside after checking in. I would even share with you that we have asked our guests to not line up at the door 30 minutes before we open on any given day. I do acknowledge the issues of homelessness run painfully and emotionally deep, and to some, even personally deep within the Inglewood community. I want to reassure you that we do not purposely turn a blind eye to the issues in this city of the housed, not housed, or the business members. In 2017, Giving Heart, being the only homeless drop-in day site, served approximately 1,400 chronically and temporarily homeless guests for our Tuesday program alone, with 22 volunteers serving faithfully. This number reflects either a one-time guest visit or reoccurring visits. The reason for their visits, that we are a mail site. We register for overnight shelter. We provide a computer lab. We have onsite resource navigators, and we partner with Metro Caring to allow our guests to get IDs, birth certificates, driver's license, and permits through a voucher. At Giving Heart, our programs are the vehicle through which we serve the most vulnerable members of Inglewood. We recognize the complexities of life for people on the streets, but at Giving Heart, we do not work from a hands-out model, but an "I worked for it" model. If walking through Giving Heart's doors was on your calendar, it might appear to be foreign to our middle-class lifestyle, challenging the modern society of what homelessness reveals and magnifies about the shortcomings of our current social fabric. In reality, we all need a place that provides identity, security, a sense of belonging, and a place of emotional well-being. To these human needs, we call Giving Heart a home for the homeless. Here is my invitation: Come without an agenda, come in humility, and come teachable and allow your vision to be expanded. As I wrap this up, I want you all to know, it deeply saddens me that Giving Heart has become the pawn to cast stones at, but I hold out hope that all the public conversations and educational forums will be the stage for some to put down their stones, knowing collaboration is where a community begins something new, something not done yet here in Inglewood until recently. I strongly believe, together, we can change the trend.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Zimmerman? Councilmember Barrington?
Could you correct me on the hours that you are open on Tuesday?
Tuesday, 10 to 3:00.
10 to 3:00. You referred to it as a drop-in day shelter, but you're only open from 10 to 3:00 on that one day?
Yes, we are a drop-in day site.
And then, just to be fair, you said you were the director. Are you compensated for your work there?
No, ma'am, I'm a volunteer.
Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Kurt Zimmerman. He will address council regarding Giving Heart. Good evening, Mr. Zimmerman. If you would give your name and address for the record.
Kurt Zimmerman, 4358 South Broadway, is Giving Heart address. My name is Kurt Zimmerman, and I'm one of the Program Directors with Giving Heart Inglewood, and I am in agreement with many of the statements that have been made over the past few weeks, but I'm also concerned. As stated last time during the open council meeting, we should be very cautious with misinformation that might be spreading. This includes from the council and from the community. Some of the comments that need to be corrected regarding the incidents that happened on February 24th about 6:30 PM about an alleged beating that took place. I can speak with authority on this subject because I was there, and I can be clearly seen on the video calling the Inglewood Police Department. There's also a second Giving Heart staff member who can be seen. If we can start the video. You can see from the video that his friends came out outside trying to calm him down and ended up... Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up just a little bit. First, a little background. You'll see a gentleman wearing a backpack on the video, and just before the ruckus started, he was inside of Giving Heart and caused a scene, which caused a second guest... With the scene with the second guest, because of that instance, he was asked to leave Giving Heart for the night. This decision was made in order to protect the staff, the volunteers, guests at Giving Heart, staff members at the host church, as well as the gentleman himself. You can see from the video that his friends came outside trying to calm him down and ended up restraining him from coming back inside of Giving Heart. He tried to make the decision to go back inside and to retrieve his cellphone. Later in the video, you will see that the friends stand up, and one of his friends runs back with his cellphone and hands it back. There were no punches that were ever thrown, no weapons of any kind ever involved. The person who cares for the well-being of another person will restrain him or her from making poor decisions, and that's exactly what's happening here. As a matter of fact, you can see that the friends are patting each other on the back at the end. So comments that have been made, such as that this person was being beaten while waiting for our services, not true. Giving Heart had no idea what was going on outside their doors, not true. That there were a lot of people just standing around watching, doing nothing, not true. Giving Heart doesn't try to keep people safe. This is also not true. We are thankful that our next-door neighbor, Mike Lindgren, from the vape shop, was able to give us this video, but we are extremely sorry that this incident ever took place. The gentleman who caused this ruckus himself was very remorseful for his behavior, and later in the week personally went over and apologized to Mr. Lindgren for his actions and explained to what happened that night. The Inglewood Police Department did come that night and took some information from all the parties who were involved. They concluded, and we agreed, that there was no assault or beating, and since the gentleman had left the area, that there was not an ongoing threat. They asked us to contact them again if we needed any further assistance. And about a week after the incident, the gentleman and two staff members from Giving Heart did go over and speak to Mr. Lindgren. Our guest was also informed at that time about the consequences of his actions with Giving Heart. Discipline is an act of love. The gentleman was asked to take a break from Giving Heart until April 1st. At that time, he will be able to ask for forgiveness, and it will probably be granted to him. April 1st, Easter Day, Resurrection Sunday, the day we as Christians celebrate the forgiveness that we have been granted through the sacrifice of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the day of forgiveness. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Councilmember Barrington?
I was just wondering, is this now available then to council?
Sorry.
Is the video from us, or... Because I've seen the video before, I just wanted to know if the video is available.
Right, last session, Councilmember Acusta had asked for the video, I think, to be seen.
The video was just presented tonight?
Yes.
From the presenter?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. Our next speaker this evening will be Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding Historic Preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn. Will you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Doug Cohn, 3051 South Marion Street. Had two things tonight. One, I want to thank you guys for putting together a really fun genealogical workshop last Saturday at the library. Dorothy Hargrove and Michelle Branstadter and the library staff did a great job. The Historic Society and the city advertised the event, and the room was full of people. Thank you to the IT person who could figure out how to connect a Mac computer to a PC projector and actually make it work. I've never been able to figure that out. And Lea Klosek from the Colorado Genealogical Society made a wonderful and challenging presentation. Great job, Inglewood Library. It was just a really fun deal. My second point has to do with what you guys were discussing in the study session, that zoning district called the M U B 1. And I have a suggestion for something to add in the conversation when you send the thing back over to the Planning and Zoning Department. Along Cherokee and Banock and Tacoma and Lincoln Street, in this zone, there are a lot of single-family homes. And I don't know why, when the zoning was changed, these homes were declared to be non-conforming. I guess that's just what happens when you make that kind of a zone. I was at the meeting with the Adjustments and Appeals Board last week about a specific property on South Lincoln Street. It's a regular-sized lot, 50 feet wide and 120 feet long, and the developer wanted to put in five condos in a skinny, tall configuration that would have consumed the whole space. And the Adjustments and Appeals guys didn't think that was a very good idea. I didn't either. It would be... Looked like either two or three stories tall, I didn't see a picture of it, but the neighbor to the north, in one of the old historic houses, would be... Might have his son disappear. You ask about the historic overlay across the alley on Grant Street, the houses on that block would lose part of the historic character. And the builder, the developer, and the people from the community of development were talking about this house being an old, rundown, junky house that you can't fix. And I got to thinking about that. The house was built by Thomas Foley, the City Councilman from Inglewood, in 1915, and it had been continuously occupied for 101 years before the developer bought it. So I guess it can't be in that bad a shape. I would ask you guys specifically, on the map that's on the back of the paper I gave to you, the two little fingers, the one that's on Tacoma Street and the other on Lincoln Street, to remove those blocks that have the old historic houses on them. Just remove them from the M U B 1 Zone District, and help to allow those old houses to not just be made into rubble and taken to the landfill. There are families in those houses, and this overlay has declared them to be non-conforming. That designation complicates any improvements that they want to make, and many insurers and lenders are not interested in working with somebody who's a non-conforming, has a non-conforming property. That's all, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cohn? Actually, could you point out on the map where you're talking about those two fingers?
Sure.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Cohn, for your presentation. Our next speaker this evening is Elaine Holtz, an Inglewood resident, will address City Please state your name and address. It's actually good to have you back.
Thank you. Elaine Holtz, 3333 South Lincoln Street, apartment 706, Inglewood 80113. Number one, I want to briefly make a comment to all the ministers in Inglewood. And I noticed that I heard Donald Zimmerman use the term "stones." I was going to talk about this tonight. It's interesting that she should say it from her point of view. But if you recall the Bible story of Jesus, he was teaching, he always taught in parables, he was teaching his followers, or his apostles, that he was preparing to go out and do as he did. And when they wanted to stone this woman because they accused her of being an adulteress, Jesus said one thing very quietly. He said, "Let the one of you who is without sin cast the first stone." Needless to say, no stones were cast. And also, another thing that Father says: When you accept accolades for your good deeds in My name, and you receive your reward from those who honor those accolades, you get no blessing from Me; only what you do in My name secretly do I bless. Let those who have ears hear. But I really came here tonight to talk about EEF, not as much about EMER, because I think that's pretty well taken care of. But to your surprise, perhaps, I got involved in studying about EMER long before Lorette Barrington, Rita Russell, and Dan, or Amy, or Wink sat on the council, way, way back. And I took, and I asked, and I did a core request. I waited a while, I had other things to do. Unfortunately, when I got my core request on the financials of one year, and then a period of five years of EEF, I was shocked. I asked for the listing of every property under their care, and I wanted to know what the expenditures were and what the receivables were, and what the bottom line was at the end of the year. I've been in real estate since I was 26. I am now 85. I've held a broker's license in three states, plus Colorado. I've built properties, I've invested in properties, I have managed commercial properties. We owned several of them at one time. So when you're talking about a broker, a broker who knows and has the experience of all the years, you can look at a financial statement of an investment, and you can pretty well size up what's going on. And I was shocked, because in my opinion, as an investor, I wouldn't invest in some of those properties, because the ratio of investment to return or profit is too low. Something's wrong somewhere. I wouldn't even advise even an investor to invest in them. I would be remiss in my duty in my relationship. I want to tell you something. Something is wrong. And the... You know, as I said before, figures don't lie, but liars can cheat a figure. Fortunately, they didn't lie on their figures. And I think there needs to be a forensic audit. And why?
Can you conclude your remarks?
Hold on. And not only that, but I'd like to know why, when, who, and how started this quasi-organization.
You have to conclude your remarks, Ms. Holtz. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Rita, I'm going to hit you. Rita?
I know, but it's red, she saw red, so...
Okay. I've got time, I have five minutes.
They just didn't start the timer till late either, so can you conclude your remarks, please?
Okay. What I wanted to say was this, it got me off track. I take issue with the attitude about the investigation. Everybody had a chance after that meeting at the study session by EEF. In fact, even a couple of months ago, they were begging to get out. I don't know why Amy and Linda didn't seek the information. I don't think it's necessary to have people who are interested, who do the homework, who take the effort, and don't squander their time on it, to have to provide it for the rest of you. You were all elected by people in this town to do a job, not one over the other, not one less than the other. We expect the same from all of you. And that was just horrendous. And that was just horrendous. I almost flew out of my chair watching this on my computer. That had no call whatsoever. Because you didn't follow through, it wasn't important enough to you? If this city is not important enough to you?
Okay, Ms. Holtz, five minutes is up. That's enough, Ms. Holtz. Thank you. Do we have a list for unscheduled public comment? Moving on to unscheduled public comments. Our first speaker is Michael Reed. Mr. Reed, good evening.
My name is Michael Reed. I spoke to you a few days ago on the phone.
Yes.
I've got three minutes or whatever.
Okay, excuse me, just a minute. Give your, would you state your name?
Michael Reed.
And your address.
3141 South Santa Bay Drive, Inglewood, Colorado.
Okay, thank you very much. And you can go ahead with, you're talking about constitutional civil equal protection?
Protection rights.
Okay.
Short and sweet. There's things happened with Inglewood Police Department in the last two years. I've been profiled, trying to help some of these people out. I've been profiled by the Inglewood Police. My ex-wife, which is about February, left in January. Came home, I have pictures of her here, right here. I was falsely arrested on February 22nd, literally by a police officer of the Inglewood Police Department. Told me on my front doorstep that they're not arresting me because I hit my wife. They're arresting me because I let her back in. On January 8th, 2017, she left the house in a e-brad, called up, told her not to come back. On February 21st, she called me, begging for my help because she was in bad shape. These are pictures of what she looked like when she came home on February 21st. On February 22nd, I told her February 21st, she'd have to move. We're cold and ready. We're done. She went and took my service dog the next day and my bicycle. A boy called up, said she was on meth and a half gallon of vodka. She has five disabilities, mental impairments, and then some. Inglewood knows this. They've put 72 mental health holds on this girl in the last three years. The problem is, I've never read them, that's the greatest thing like that. The officer that arrested me told me that they wanted to arrest me for hitting her. They know I didn't hit her. I love this girl. And I went through a lot in five years. But she was falsely arrested, then taken to a Rappel County jail, where I was denied my life-saving insulin. That nature and that's the case for Rappel County. But the reality of it is, it's an officer who did not have relations with my wife a year and a half prior. And the only reason I say this is because that night, on February 22nd, when I was arrested, he took me to the hospital and I had seven stitches put in my eye. I get back to the police car. I don't know this officer from time. He had asked me if my wife's had HIV. Why wouldn't Inglewood Police Officer ask me that? If he was not the officer that had relations? And that bothered me. I let it go. I've had nine felonies and eight misdemeanors convicted by people in the city of Inglewood. And the police have done nothing to apprehend these people or protect my equal rights. I've had my car stolen. June 5th, I was wrecked by a guy. Cop came up, said he's a bull. He took off, two others came up, said, "Well, you moved your truck, so..." Well, I'm going to give him a ticket. Without large damage to my vehicle, and I cannot make it to him from my doctor's office.
All right, so if you could conclude your remarks. What, I do have one question for you. What is it that you're asking of City Council?
Asking the City Police Department to look at the police department. They can afford a new city jail or whatever, a new police department, but they can't afford body cameras. Just like all these giving heart people.
All right. Thank you.
Giving people's rights.
All right. Thank you for bringing this forward. And we will be requesting some information. Thank you. If you want to take those pictures over to the city clerk, she will enter them into the record.
Okay, I have a disc. If you want to see two.
Okay. The next person on the agenda this evening is Scott Moore. Good evening, Mr. Moore. Would you give us your address?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Scott Moore, and I own the property at 4370 South Broadway. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. The subject of this address will be corroboration of the facts that Councilperson Barrington brought before council in a study session preceding last council meeting. These are facts about a nuisance business on our block called Giving Heart. Councilwoman Barrington is a true and stalwart representative of her constituency. Were all government officials as selflessly dedicated to the people they represent as she, the world would truly become a better place quickly. Thank you, Councilwoman Barrington. I watched the recorded video of that study session as Councilwoman Barrington delicately and compassionately presented the facts involved regarding a very politically and emotionally charged subject matter. Yes, Giving Heart leaves the homeless out on cold, in the cold, on the worst nights of the year. Yes, the people that frequent the Giving Heart carry weapons. Yes, one of our business owners on the block has been assaulted. Yes, we have seen video footage of someone getting beaten. Yes, the truly needy hide in the shadows in fear of the more violent thugs. Yes, Giving Heart brings the criminal element to our block, serves some, and leaves the others behind. No, Giving Heart does not do adequate background checks. Yes, the ownership and support of Giving Heart is tied to out-of-town interests. I also watched the video of the previous council meeting. As if a string of people coming to the podium to slander our city council was not bad enough, these people claimed to be Christian clergy. Their actions were decidedly un-Christian. Businesses on the 4300 South block of Broadway are under siege. When the Giving Heart is open, it is as if we and our customers have to cross a picket line of armed thugs to access our buildings. Our revenues are down. Our livelihoods are seriously threatened. Some of us are on the verge of losing our homes. How can one business's interest be considered above all others? I imagine City Council would like to find a solution to this problem. A handout to Giving Heart is not the answer, but perhaps a hand up is. That hand up should be a requirement that Giving Heart have police presence anytime they are open. In a very short time, this level of police presence will eliminate the thugs and assure the success of Giving Heart in their goal to help the truly downtrodden among us. True Christian service does not elevate some to the detriment of others. Members of City Council, we need your help to survive and conquer this onslaught. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Moore?
Yes. Councilmember Wink? Thank you. Mr. Moore, you have a business? You own a business?
I own the property, and I own a business in the property. And there is a second business in the property and a residence on the property.
At 4370?
South Broadway. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Colleen Moore. Good evening, Ms. Moore.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Russell and members of the council. My name is Colleen Moore, and my small family business-
Excuse me, could you just give your address right quick?
We have a home in Inglewood at 4175 South Acoma Street, and we have the business at 4370 South Broadway.
Okay, thank you.
Our small family business, an architecture and engineering firm, relocated to the 4300 block of Broadway in June of 2016. Our small firm had long since outgrown my small home, also in Inglewood. When we bought the property in 2014, it took us nearly two years and so much of our blood, sweat, tears, and nearly all of our savings to renovate it into, from a former junk shop into a viable retail establishment. Our space is home to a retail location for a barber. We have a small home in the back that is an affordable housing unit. And we have a space for our own business to grow. What we did not realize we were signing up for was the near constant rousting of people camping on our property, doing drugs, defecating, urinating, and other activities. My husband and myself are the ones literally cleaning up the human feces, litter, and abandoned personal belongings left behind by people migrating through the area. It is a very easy connection to make between the increase in incidents on our property of this nature and the opening hours of the Giving Heart, just a few doors down. Our councilwoman, Councilmember Barrington, has done a wonderful job of bringing our very valid and justifiable concerns to the community along with Mayor Pro Tem Russell. And I want to thank both of them for the care and concerns that they've shown to our concerns. I am appalled at the organized public shaming that was done to our council at the last meeting by people that are not members or citizens of Inglewood. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Moore? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker this evening is Kelly Moore. Or, I'm sorry, Kelly Martinez. I apologize. Good evening, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening.
Would you please give your name and address?
Kelly Martinez, 4370 South Broadway, Unit B. So I'm the owner of Broadway Barbers, and I was the one that was assaulted on Tuesday, January 16th. And I just want to tell you what happened that day. I was with a client when a girl and a guy were standing in front of my door, yelling obscenities. I opened my door and asked if she could move from the front of my shop, and she started cussing at me. I stepped outside, and that's when she began hitting me with closed fists on my head a total of nine times. Then she took off running. There were no volunteers outside. But there were other people who are receiving services from Giving Heart that came over and asked me if I was okay. So I had asked them if the people in charge were over there at Giving Heart, and they said yes. So I went over there, and I was greeted by a lady that was sitting at a table. I told her what had happened, and she went into the back, where there is a room, and brought the people that are in charge out. And I explained to them what had happened. And they had no idea what was going on outside. On several occasions, I have witnessed the homeless asking my clients for money when they come into my shop. They're, they hang out in front of my shop when it's cold, waiting for Giving Heart to open at 6:00. I have witnessed up to 20 people at one time. They usually lay on the sidewalk and nap. This causes pedestrians to walk on the street. When I have asked them to move from my shop, they get very belligerent with me and make it difficult for me to provide a safe environment for my customers and the other barbers that work for me. That's it.
Thank you. And have you, did you report that to the police?
Yes, we called the police. We made a 911 call, and it took them 35 minutes to show up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barrington?
Have you ever talked to any of the owners or the proprietors, people that run Giving Heart, to try and address some of these issues?
When I first opened up the shop, I, we were in contact with each other, and I would email her. I expressed my concerns to her. It would go away for a little bit, but then it would come back. And the problems with people hanging out in front of my shop and people drunk passed out in front of my shop.
You said at the beginning you did. Why don't you anymore?
Because nothing has changed.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Decker. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Daryl Schut. Good evening, Mr. Schut. If you'll give your name and address.
Happy to. I'm Daryl Schut, and I live at 4824 South Grant Street. Thank you all for your service to our city. I wish to address the homeless comments and foundation issues discussed at the March 5th meeting. While providing a monthly meal to a group of low-income Denver seniors for seven or eight years, many of whom were homeless, I learned a great many things. And here are just a couple. Homelessness is a growing problem in every community, not just Inglewood. Homelessness can happen to anyone. And when the cost of housing rises, as they are in Colorado, and especially in Inglewood, more people, including families, find themselves homeless. Many communities have had to address homelessness issues to a far greater degree than Inglewood has thus far. Therefore, I believe that Inglewood, its representatives, and its citizens would be far better served by engaging with and supporting those who, with the help of volunteers and limited resources, are trying to address our homelessness issues rather than chastising them. After all, we're all in this together. Speaking of being in this together, honesty, decorum, collegiality, professionalism, and decency are all attributes that apply to every successful board. Anything less promotes distrust, disharmony, and less-than-effective governance. I have served on both types of boards and know the difference. The clear blinding, blindsiding of this council staff and the public due to the backdoor activities of several council members with an agenda, regardless of how well-founded their concerns were, only serve to undermine the trust that must exist in and within any governing body. The subsequent lack of candor, finger-pointing, obfuscation, and retreat to executive session only serves to heighten this observation. An organization always reflects its leader, and in this case, leaders. If some on the council cannot be transparent and forthcoming amongst the entire council itself in real time, then how can the public and staff expect more? Well, I do expect more from our civic leaders than this corrosive conduct revealed at the March 5th meeting. And I also hope that you do as well and will act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schut. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Peter Olson. Good evening, Mr. Olson. Would you please give your name and address?
My name is Peter Olson. I work at 3001 South Acoma in Inglewood. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know I speak for other Giving Heart friends who say we'd rather not be taking up such a significant part of the council's time to fight for the right to labor among the poor and needy in Inglewood. Councilmember Barrington, I met you briefly for the first time two weeks ago after I initially spoke to the council as a friend of Giving Heart. At that time, I told you that I appreciate you. And I meant, I mean that sincerely. I appreciate a number of things about you. The first is that you're clearly, seeing that you're a fighter. It's just on this issue with Giving Heart and Inglewood poor, I believe you're on the wrong side of the fight. But even if you aren't, my biggest concern has been the way in which you have brought the fight against volunteers in the ministry. You've spoken of the area businesses and neighbors as being your constituents, and this is true. We agree that you need to hear and work for their legitimate concerns. It's just that the volunteer staff at Giving Heart are also your constituents. And I believe the most painful thing for them is that, to my knowledge, not once have you sat down directly and privately with the staff to present your and other constituents' concerns. Instead, you choose to preempt that and do it in a public way before the city. Instead, you choose to preempt that and do it in a public way before the city. Because of this, I believe Giving Heart didn't have the ability to tell you privately that much of your information was inaccurate, and that for the parts that were accurate, they didn't have the opportunity to become aware of them from you and make necessary changes before having things brought in an unproductive and divisive way before this forum. Unfortunately, because of the way that this has been presented, a number of us are taking up valuable time before the council, speaking to these things. And there's unnecessary division and conflict among Inglewood constituents and businesses and neighbors, which would have been better served in a different manner. Because of this turn of events, I believe that the needed trust, at least certainly from Giving Heart's end, does not presently exist to support Councilmember Barantine's leadership in this endeavor. My appeal is for one of the at-large members of the council to step into this role and dialogue with the Giving Heart staff and business owners to present any legitimate concerns from businesses and neighbors so that there can be productively presented and addressed. And in closing, Councilmember Barantine, I realize that you are not my enemy, even though there have been some vigorous disagreements among many of us over these last several weeks. It's my hope that a greater civility and even trust can be restored. This trust will take time. It's also my hope that we would be able to partner together in a greater way with you and that your significant talents can be used in a greater way to serve the homeless and needy within the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker, I'm having trouble reading it. It is, hang on just a second. Is it Sarah? Pardon me? Yeah, that's what I, it's, okay, you're next. If you would come up and tell us your name and address, I am so sorry.
Hi, I'm Syf Khan. I'm regarding to 43, 46 South Broadway. That incident that happened on February 24th, that day, no one knows the full story because I was there during the time, before the fight and after the fight. A remark was made to one of the gentlemen about, he was making fun of him about his mom having cancer. He got upset. That's when the fight started. But before that, I walked to the gate, point of a barrel of a gun was pointed right to my head, facing towards the homeless. I don't know if he was aiming at me or the homeless people. And that's the one thing as a customer to Gecko Vapes, we do not hate the homeless. But something needs to change about this. That no one says anything about remarks about a gun, only two people and me. There was a gun. I know there was a second person, someone said there was a second person with the gun. But at that time, I had run to my car and drove off and pulled over to the US Bank, crossed the street to make sure that no one else was going to get shot. There, and then there was another, for the very first time for the fight I've saw over on 43 and 46 South Broadway. Gentlemen drinking a full bottle, cussing at people who are walking, homeless. Let me remake my words. Drinking, cussing at me, cussing at other customers that are going in. Even at, even at the time that I was there, I saw a man who was sitting by the barber shop who attacked that lady. That time, I had gone to my car. I couldn't do anything at the time. I didn't, couldn't, but I did try, I did try to call 911 to tell them that someone was trying to hurt this lady. There had been a lot of fights broken out that the homeless have been causing, and that, that should not happen to me as a customer or as a pedestrian, that I shouldn't be in danger from wa, to walking past Giving Heart, walking past those homeless people, knowing that I'm not going to get either hurt, shot, or killed, or even brutally beaten, because I've seen it too many times on that street. And as there, as people say, I've heard rumors of saying that, or the Gecko Vapes have been blaming them, that's saying they hate the homeless. No, we don't. We don't hate the homeless. But there, but this should stop because now there's, there's citizens and public being endangered now. It's gone down to a gun. Gone to a gun at the dome. It should stop.
Okay. I have one question for you. You said you tried to call the poli, or you tried to call 911.
Yes, and my phone died at the time. I couldn't, I tried to get for help, but I couldn't, I tried to go for help, but at the time, it was, I, I couldn't do anything. I tried to go to the nearest police station I could find, but at the time I was, I don't know Inglewood very well. I live in Halton Ranch.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Khan? Thank you very much for coming forward this evening. Our next speaker is Mr. Lindsey. Go ahead. All right. And our final speaker is Mike Lindgren. Good evening, Mr. Lindgren. Can you give us your name and address?
I'm Mike Lindgren. I own Gecko Vapes on 43, 46 South Broadway.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So as I said, I'm Mike Lindgren. I own and operate Gecko Business on Broadway, right next door to Giving Heart. In fact, I'm sandwiched between a marijuana dispensary and a soup kitchen. And ironically, Mr. Zimmerman's comments about the bar and the dispensary, both on Broadway, if you cherry pick those two to be the worst, and you're not even to that par, that's kind of where I'm having the issue from is I don't have issues with either of those businesses. They don't affect the way I run mine. Going through here, I am in, as long as titles seem to matter, I'm an honorably discharged veteran, and if paperwork finally gets pushed through, I'm going to be a service-connected disability, although I'm still waiting on that one. I've also graduated multiple Christian schools. I'm an ordained minister in the, in the city. I work in an industry that I also believe is doing God's work by saving millions of lives. Everything I just said is true. However, none of it should matter. The only part that matters, I own and operate a business in Inglewood. And right now, I'm having issues. To be honest, there is so much interest tonight. If even a fraction of the effort that is going into speeches would have been used to talk to the surrounding businesses, there'd be no issue. This whole evening would be empty. Just to be clear here, I've heard a lot of things the past few weeks, and just to let everyone know, no, I do not hate the homeless. In fact, I find that personally offensive, both morally and the fact that I was opening my doors on cold days so they didn't have to wait out in the cold for Giving Heart to unlock the doors. There's no persecution here. We share the same faith. I think we go about things a little different, but honestly, the sure fact that we have everyone gathered here to talk to you, and when I've talked to them, no one's talked back, that's kind of a big issue. This should have been resolved back in 2016, not this year with two acts of violence. I've seen bats, I've seen knives, two customers have seen guns. And before it escalates any further, people need to feel safe coming to my store. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Are there any questions for Mr. Lindgren? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. Now I will entertain council response to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Councilmember Barantine?
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I think anytime you have an issue or it goes over a long extended period of time, like with Ethan E. Murph. Mr. Frazier should start his questioning with Elaine Holtz and Doug Cohen, because they were the people that brought issues with those two funding arms of the city, to my attention. And that was four or five years ago, and it certainly has been going on for the whole two years of council. And a little research on some of the records, you would know that the, the investigation with the district attorney was initiated by the city manager, an assistant city manager, not, not council. And so, and history matters. Doug Cohen will tell you that. History matters. So it's a little difficult to go ahead and maybe try to understand a situation that happened at a council meeting without all the background, which is exactly what we were, I think, trying to do for the two new people, was at least allow them a little background before they went ahead and got into a discussion. And there were some personnel issues that needed to be considered with that as well. And in, and in rewriting history, again, I have been working on this issue with the 4300 block for well over a year, almost a year and a half now. And I have been to Giving Heart twice. The first time, it was explained to me that it was located there because they thought it was the worst block in the city of Inglewood, and they thought they were bringing an asset to it. I may have taken a little bit of offense to that, and I think some of the people who have invested in that area, the residences, in my community, that's my district, would take a little offense to that as well. We have a lot of charitable organizations along Broadway in my district and in my community, and we have no other problem like this at any other location. And it is, you're correct, Mike, this should have been taken care of a long time ago, and I am, I'm a little concerned that it is not. Without being disrespectful to the other people, I do appreciate the, the presentations. The concern that Mike brought up has weighed, heavily on my heart. From the time that the presentation was made two weeks ago, what has happened since the last time Giving Heart and their volunteers came and presented two weeks ago, it came to my attention from some homeless people and the business owners as well, that a problem is being created that is harming the homeless in our community, that the most vulnerable, those most in need, are being told by those they are turning to for help, that this community, our businesses, our neighbors, and especially me, hate them. I have never heard of anything so cruel than that anyone who would tell another human being that they are hated, diminishing them, causing them pain, inciting anger, and escalating a situation with a lie, using those in need for what seems to be a political agenda. Rather, I hope and pray that you take a more positive, loving approach to address and resolve the concerns of the residents and the businesses, follow the law, and equally important, to keep everyone, including the homeless we are striving to serve, safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other response, council response to public comment? Councilmember Olson?
Do you want to thank everyone for coming? I don't know why this issue is just kind of getting me choked up tonight, but this is a conversation worth having because it's about human life on both sides and all sides. And so, I really want to encourage people to go to the forum on, or the Change the Trend Forum on Thursday evening, which I think you were told about tonight. Unfortunately, I am out of town, so I'm very disappointed that I can't be there. But as a follow-up, I hope that we can take up the request to have some kind of a further conversation between those who, we have great differences, great divides on this. Businesses should be protected in their business, there's no question about that, and the homeless that are at our doorsteps need care. And I cannot thank enough for those who are really trying to do something about it, and for your willingness to say, let us figure this out together. And I want to hold your feet to the fire on that one, because there are no simple solutions to some of the things that are happening to the businesses either. So I look forward to hearing what happens after the Change the Trend Forum and hope that many of you go out to it. And I will be watching as I think it's going to be recorded. Is that right, City Manager Kek? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to thank everyone for coming this evening. This does not have any easy answers, but I do plan on attending the Change the Trend meeting, and I want to work together to find a solution that works for both sides. And I do believe that there were things at the very beginning that kind of created division rather than unity. And so, I, along with Councilmember Olson and Councilmember Barantine, want to find some solutions to this that will make everyone safe. Some of the things that I've heard tonight are very disconcerting to me, even for the safety of the volunteers and the businesses also. And so, I do believe that perhaps on Thursday night, the Change the Trend will be the first step in resolving this. And so, I just thank you all for coming out tonight. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item. Nine, A, actually, the consent agenda items, 9A1, 9B1, 9C1, 9C2, and 9C3. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I have a second. Martinez beat me.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. I'm just getting to my notes here. I did have a question regarding item BI, which is the fees to Arapahoe County for them helping us out with the special election. I don't necessarily want to pull it, I just had a question regarding those figures. Not the same.
Can, City Attorney, can we pull, or can we just speak about a question to that one item and leave it in the, leave it in the consent agenda?
There's a motion and second on the floor. You, at this appropriate time for discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. City Clerk Carlisle, thank you. And I am going to open up that item here in my packet. It's more regarding the total, which I believe came in right around $9,000 from Arapahoe County. What additional fees are you expecting on top of that?
So we're estimating another, probably around $5,000 for additional election expenses, so election judges and supplies and anything to basically conduct the rest of the election. So Arapahoe County, the printing and mailing was the primary cost involved.
Sure.
And so that, we're estimating about another $5,000.
Okay. And I know that's subject to change, so I appreciate the estimate.
Yes.
So I'm looking at $9,215 from Arapahoe County, call it $5,000, again, ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to estimate it, but I think it is going to come in right in around $15,000, primarily because it's one district, and we've been able to kind of keep the cost down as much as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Seeing no more conversation, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11A1, Approval of Ordinances on First Reading. Council Bill Number Nine and Ordinance Amending Title I, Chapter Five, Section 1528 of the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000, Adopting Bob's Rules of Order as the Rules of Procedure Governing Meetings of the City Council of the City of Inglewood. Staff recommends approval. Our staff person is City Attorney Allison McKinney-Brown.
Our staff person is City Attorney Allison McKinney-Brown. I would entertain a motion.
So, moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I think this is wonderful, finally. However, I have one quick question. So, how do we really enforce these? Is there some process or procedure? Let's say I'm just disobeying rules, left, right, and center, to be completely frank. I mean, what do we do?
The only real enforcement is the authority of the mayor. And the mayor has the authority to remove a member's ability to speak. So, basically, the mayor can say, you have hereby lost the floor. And that individual does not get the floor back until the mayor feels that they're under control and can abide by the rules and then can recognize them again. So, that's the only real authority to enforce.
Solely the presiding officer. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
I'm glad that Member Wink brought this up. I would like to see us in future discussions, perhaps when we're continuing on with policy procedures, to talk about what our response is and what we do want the presiding officer to do, and so that there's some strength behind it, so that nobody gets blindsided and, just so we have a clearer idea of what we are going to do. There is more than one thing on here that happens over and over. You know, it's not just interrupting each other, it's other things. Perhaps during our eight-hour thing, we can add an, no, maybe not.
And I actually think that the policy manual is tied to this as well, and so probably some of the policies will be discussed.
Probably. And that would be a good place to probably, to go over it and outline what we're going to do.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Barantine.
And that's just what I was going to suggest, is that the procedure manual isn't where to, where we would address that if we want to. I'm trying to address the format of it, it would be more in the policies of it. The desire, not only for this council but other councils in the past, was for Inglewood and other places, depending on what's going on, to try to exact punishment is not really possible. Because as an elected official, the punishment is supposed, you're answering to your constituency. So, we do, I think it's probably best to try and do some kind of format under the policy. And then, of course, like any law or agreement, it's in the honor of people following it. Only we follow it or don't follow it much more publicly than most people do.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine. I actually just have one housekeeping, well, I have a couple of things, but one of them is a housekeeping thing on page one of the ordinance, in the very first paragraph, whereas efficient and well-run public meetings, in the last line begins with "are," and I believe it should be R-A-R-E, are aired amicably. So, that's just a change. The other question that I have is on page two in the ordinance, also under point of decorum. It says, "Point of decorum is a request of a member requiring a second for the body as a whole to review an act of a member for conformance with the rules of decorum, as such rules have been established and adopted by the body as a whole. It shall require approval by a majority of the quorum present. It shall not be debatable." I don't know why, oh, I know what it is, in the first line, requiring a second. In two other places, it says, "Point of decorum does not require a second." And the other two places are on page six, paragraph A, and also page nine in the example.
Let me pull that up really quickly. I was just going back to the chart at the end and conforming to the chart, so.
Did you say the charter?
Chart.
The chart in the very, the very last page, so where it has the motions and.
But the decorum is in the charter, was this taken out of the charter as it is? There is a section in the charter for decorum already?
No.
No.
No. At the end of Bob's Rules of Order, there is a chart.
Oh, chart, you were saying, okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa, you will check those two things.
I'll make sure that Bob's Rules of Order conform to the ordinance as you're passing it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I noticed the same thing, or in that same section as you did, page two, H1, page two, H1B, where there's reference to rules of decorum. And I don't see those outlined anywhere. And that seems something to me that could be subjective to each particular member. Is that something we will get to then in policy, if I'm understanding?
Rules of decorum are currently adopted within the policy manual. And maybe next week, when you continue reviewing the policy manual, you'll get to that list. So, I think you already have 20 adopted rules of decorum, plus the rules that are set forth within the code that I've had to include in this ordinance. So, you already, you do have a lot of rules of decorum.
Thank you. So, it is those rules in policy that we'll be applying here?
The ones that have been adopted by the council, yes.
Thank you. And just to be clear, that's by prior councils where we're most likely going to be adopting a new set, once we complete them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine.
So, we will be requiring a second? Yes. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any more questions? It has been moved and seconded that we approve Bob's Rules of Order. If there's no further discussion, Councilmember Barantine?
With the corrections that we made.
Oh, with the corrections, thank you.
Okay, as long as we're doing that.
With the corrections made. No further comments, please vote.
Waiting on one vote.
Does someone need to vote?
Oh, sorry.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 11C, under resolutions and motions. 11C1, the wastewater treatments plant administration building remodel project. The Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant recommends that council approve by motion a construction contract with W.O. Danielson Construction Company to conduct the administration building remodel projects in the amount of $317,600. And also, they recommend a contingency of 5% for the change order in the amount of $15,800 for a total project cost of $333,400. Deputy Director of Strategic Programs, Blair Corning, is here to speak with us.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Good evening, Mayor Protam, council members. I have a quick PowerPoint presentation about the admin building remodel projects that I'd like to kind of familiarize you with the project as we have it envisioned. To give you a little history on the admin building, it's undergone multiple expansions. The facility was built in 1970s, you know, after the Clean Water Act was passed. And it was originally just, if you see that purple arrow there, you know, that, that was kind of the admin, and then there was a shop out back. It's been expanded multiple times in the 1980s. They added an expansion, you can see, I don't know if you can see that, but the blue arrow to add more space. In the 90s, they added on a maintenance shop, turned the other shop into a lunchroom and built some locker room areas. And then in 2000, they did one more addition, which was this area here, which was more office space and some storage. So, it's undergone multiple expansions throughout its lifetime. The goals of this project are mainly from a security and safety enhancement perspective. The number one goal is to improve in security and safety of the entry area and where we deal with customers and the public and vendors and that kind of thing. Also included is we need more workspace for different folks at the facility. And then, we want to make some changes that are in line with our workforce strategy and what was outlined in the WASA, which is the Workforce Alignment Strategy Assessment that you all approved last year, to kind of put the right people together to do the jobs that they need to do. So, the need for change, just to go in a little bit more, I mean, y'all know the world we're living in now. We have an amplified sensitivity to security risks. Last year, or last month, I mean, February 16th, I think it was, we had a gentleman that had a rifle in the parking lot, and it turned out to be a BB gun, and it was kind of a non-event, and the cops were there. But it just reinforces our desire to kind of increase the security and safety of our employees in the facility. Also, the industry's changed, you know? I've been doing this 20-plus years, and when I started, it wasn't such a high-tech environment. Everybody didn't need a computer and a screen and use different software programs. Now, it's not, you know, on any given day, you can have operators using the, you know, water information management system to see trends of the treatment process to make adjustments. You can have maintenance doing asset management on a computerized system. The labs enter in data into their laboratory information management system. So, probably like everything else, computers have kind of ingrained themselves, and the process has gotten so complex that you can't do without computers, which requires more stations and access to a terminal for people. So, another, the third reason is multiple disciplines are now involved. You know, we used to be operations operated, well, now we're finding that we need operations next to maintenance, next to engineering, next to the safety, you know, people to get the job done. So, we want to try to put work groups in alignment and get them where they need to be to get the job done. So, just a quick summary on this, like I said, the main, the main component is this entry lobby area reception desk. We're going to make that more secure, some side projects, operations muster room, we're going to move the electrical instrumentation and controls group over there, so they're working hand-in-hand with operations like they should be. We're going to make some modifications in the maintenance room to house the innovation and optimization group, and also add some more meeting space. We found we don't have, we have two meeting rooms, and we're needing more, we've found. Also, we're going to, we're going to take a storage room, add additional workstations there for people to do, to do work in. I kind of broke out the project, I've kind of described it, but that's how the four areas break down. The main one is in the blue there, that's security. The gray is that additional meeting room and modifications. And then the other two pieces are the yellow and orange. So, we solicited bids, the bid opening was February 6, 2018. We received three bids with the lowest bidder coming from W.O. Danielson Construction Company. They're located in Inglewood, Colorado. We reviewed their qualifications and their history, and they have done similar projects, and we feel they can perform the scope of the project that we've asked for. So, we're asking for approval of 333,400. That's that bid amount of 317,600, plus that 5% contingency, which hopefully, we don't need to get into, but sometimes there's unforeseen things that come up on projects. As far as the budget, and I have a slide after this to kind of orient, you know, I've been bringing a lot of projects early on in the year, but we have money in the budget available for this project, and we were anticipating this project needed to get done this year. That projects update, I think I tried to show you this last time, but these are the projects that you all have approved, the bar screen replacement, the facility infrastructure repairs, which was kind of the ladders, stairways, digester roof seal repair, and then this is, this is the fourth one, the admin remodel project. So, those are kind of the amounts and what's been approved thus far. And so, in summary, you know, the project meets our needs of increasing security, adding some workstations, aligning workgroups to be more efficient and effective. It doesn't require new expansion or construction like the past ones. We're trying to use the space we have, but just use it more wisely. It's also, it supports Inglewood's five, Inglewood Five Emergency Management Focus. One of the Inglewood Five is emergency management, and we feel this is a big piece of planning for emergencies. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Corning? I actually have one.
Yes.
I was very excited on this contract approval summary. For the first time, I noticed where the line item funding is and then portion of line item spent. So, if you go back to that slide before, all of those, that one right there, all of those things that have been approved, are they coming out of the same capital projects?
Yeah, they all come out of that $11,100,000. If you remember, a big chunk of that, eight million was for the biogas project. There are some projects that carry over from last year that you've already approved, the SOP study, and some different things. But yeah, these are all coming out of there. The reason they're, they're not out of the account is because we're, you know, just having startup meetings, getting mobilized, getting ready to go. So, we haven't been billed for any of them yet.
Okay, so, once it's actually spent, that money will be showed over here, how much money has been spent?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm very encouraged by that form. Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 11C2, professional services agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for the performance audit of Inglewood Environmental Foundation and the Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation. Staff recommends council approve by motion a professional services agreement with Clifton Larson Allen in the amount of $30,000 for a performance audit of both the Inglewood Environmental Foundation and the Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation. Assistant City Manager Mark Wolf is here to, do you want to present or do you just want to take questions?
I'm happy to present. Just a short explanation, I think would be helpful for everybody, if that pleases the body.
That's fine. We do have one council member that needs to leave, and it, so I think you'll have time to present, but.
This is a short presentation.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Members of council, I just wanted to describe a bit what this is. We are requesting approval of a $30,000 professional services agreement with Clifton Larson Allen or CLA for the performance audit of those two entities, which are a mouthful, so I'll refer to them as Eiff and EMIRF going forward. For clarity, both were created in this quasi-public nonprofit way for the purposes, and I'm boiling down a lot of history in a short period of time, so forgive me, essentially to protect the city's interest in land holdings. Now, at the time, there were specific reasons for doing so that made a lot of sense. For Eiff, it was primarily environmental remediation and to take on debt related to that and the redevelopment of the city center where we are today. For EMIRF, it was to protect McClellan Reservoir and some of the surrounding properties to monitor adjacent uses of the land around the reservoir, okay? Despite Eiff and EMIRF's existence as separate entities, they are operated by city staff with significant participation from city council. Now, while there may have been original justification for the establishment of these entities, this extra layer of bureaucracy may no longer be necessary, or at least it should be examined. And that is what the suggestion is with this proposal for the professional services agreement. We find it necessary to arm this city council with the best policy guidance possible, to bring an outside firm in to offer that type. bring an outside firm in to offer that type of expertise for you going forward. A performance audit will examine the overall functionality and practicality of the current structures. This includes analyzing the efficiency and effectiveness of the use of the current resources. Perhaps more important, this type of analysis will provide strategic guidance on the city's position in terms of our assets for both EEF and EMRF. In addition, this professional services agreement will be managed by the city and reported back to the city council for recommendations. Despite that, the funding will be provided by EEF and EMRF themselves. So it's a good discount for us, but we find it important that the city manages the contract. That's why it's in front of you this evening. Finally, I would like to address the difference between performance audit and a forensic audit. A forensic audit primarily examines whether the financial statements are accurate and lawful. I want to be very clear, because there has been, you know, insinuation back and forth and for the purposes of our staff that are involved in those entities now, we have no concern over the misuse of funds or unlawful activity related to these two entities and how our current staff is managing those two entities. I think that's very important. If we did, we would suggest a forensic audit. We do have all of the financial information. Our own finance department collects the EEF and EMRF financial statements, and they are reviewed by an independent auditor annually each year, just like all of the other city financial documents are. If we felt that there were red flags under this administration and the staff that are currently managing those entities, we would be requesting a different type of audit. I want to make that clear. A performance audit provides us a forward-looking policy guidance. It provides us that forward-looking approach. I'm not here to speak or defend anything that's happened in the past. I can't speak to that. I wasn't there for that. Many of us were not here for that. But what I can say is that the convoluted nature of these structures provides at least the appearance that there's extralayer bureaucracy or difficulty in getting the best out of our assets that we can. A performance audit will provide that type of analysis. So that's the reason why we're focused on a performance audit this evening, and why we feel that's the best approach to give you the policy guidance that you need going forward for these two entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Berentine.
You said that they could make a recommendation back to council, but it's my understanding that these, neither of these entities can be disbanded until the assets that they took over the debt that created these organizations, that we can't do that unless we can pay off the debt to, say, for the city hall. Unless we can pay off the debt for the city hall, we can't disband EEF, the Inglewood Environmental Foundation.
My suggestion is not...
So I'm not sure why, if that's the only reason, why would we want to spend $30,000 if we were not really looking at disbanding either one of them?
My suggestion is not to simply disband. It's to have an outside firm come in and do that type of analysis, to look at our restrictions, whether it's our participation on the debt, whether it's our current lease agreements that we have on some of the properties, and provide us going forward with some guidance. Maybe it's saying, well, in this year, you're free, so to speak, to disband or to reorganize or what have you. I think having an understanding of what those restrictions are, what our participation is on a number of those fronts is important, because ultimately, the city council controls both of those entities.
But the structure, the legal structure that set them up is a separate organization, and we really can't, I mean, it's pretty complicated to disband that.
Correct.
And our role in that is pretty limited as well.
Right, except for the appointment of the board members that control those entities.
So we don't have control over the entity, but we have control over the employees that are on the board?
Correct.
Okay.
The members of the board, to be clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So you are requesting our approval of the contracting of this performance audit via, or vis a vis, Clifton Larson Allen?
Correct.
That's it?
Yes. The funding comes from the other two entities.
Sure.
We wanted to bring this attention, to the attention of the council, given a number of different policy implications going forward.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Then, I actually would like to, this is not, we need to make sure that we have the right vehicle for accountability. It is not about the current staff moving forward. I think we need to answer the questions. We've talked about what a performance audit will do, but I also think that this council needs to talk about what a forensic audit might do. And so I would like to entertain questions. I mean, you summarized it a little bit. It's not, my own personal feeling on this is that we have, as a city council, a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Inglewood to make sure that things have gone like they're supposed to. And I do believe that there is indication that perhaps there have been some things that we need to look at a forensic audit. With that said, I'm going to call on Councilmember Martinez first.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. Thank you for bringing this forward again. Just a kind of paperwork detail on here. When this originally came forward, it said if we approved it, it would start, or phase one would be completed by March 15th. Obviously, that will be amended to whatever the time...
That's correct. We would be working with CLA to amend that date, but presumably just the same amount of time as we were proposing, so perhaps that first phase would be done in about a month.
Okay, great. And then, so I understand, from your perspective, a forensic audit is more looking for unlawful activity as it relates to finances specifically?
Correct.
And then, a performance audit is just talking about operations and efficiencies within how it's structured or run?
That's right. There's financial implications for the efficiency and use of resources, but it is not examining the past financials and the transactions and determining whether or not there was misuse or unlawful activity. That's the distinction. To boil it down, performance audit is more looking at your position now and what is the best strategic position in the future, whereas a forensic audit is more primarily geared towards looking previously at the financial records.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. I would, maybe this is a point of information or clarification of what we're doing. I would prefer that we make a decision based on this, and if there's something else that someone wants to bring forward as a different item, then let's do that. But this is so needed, I would like to see us move it to a discussion, at least of whether or not we're going to then approve it. So are we now, we're not dealing with this one, we're talking about something else now, about a forensic rather than this?
We're talking about either/or rather than both at this point. You're suggesting...
Perhaps we need to rule on this one first, then. I mean, if there's a no vote to this, then maybe we have to move to whatever it is. But I'm thinking that this has been on the agenda as this item and not a forensic audit.
Okay. Councilmember Wink is next.
Thank you. So, given the, I'm going to paraphrase Mr. Wolf, and hope I don't falsify anything. So given the financials related to this matter have been examined by our own staff, or the audits, correct? There's an audit that takes place annually, is that...
Right, so our staff and the board members on both of these entities review the annual financials. We also have an independent auditor required each year review city financials, and in that review, we include EEF and EMRF as well. Now, that's not a forensic audit, but that is our annual audit, making sure that our financials are in order and...
Very good. So it seems that we are, the performance audit would be an excellent option for us right now, and for perhaps the members that want a forensic audit, perhaps we can just divulge the results from this report to council to satisfy that assessment of the finances?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Essentially, what you would be getting is the package of the annual financials from both entities. There's no report necessarily, and I'll certainly yield to Ms. Wrinkle if I mischaracterize this, but there wouldn't be anything that says you're managing this correctly or incorrectly. It's just looking at our books overall and saying whether or not there is some type of inaccuracy in how they're being reported.
Sure. And it gives us an opportunity to look for ourselves at the process that's gone through on the financial...
All of that information on both entities is available to you in public.
Okay, thank you. I'm only looking for compromise and the way forward here, so...
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I think in your presentation, you're making it pretty clear that this performance audit is for the way it is now and the situation we're dealing with now. And I think for the last two years, an organization that was not transparent, was not public, did not provide minutes nor financials to council for its entire existence until just this last year, really. I don't think anybody was questioning what's going on now. But you're saying that the performance audit, and I don't think anybody's questioned that there's anything untoward going on at this moment, and I think the city manager was accurate a couple of weeks ago at council, when he said that this was requested by myself two years ago. And a performance audit would only kind of take care of what's going on now. So my kind of point of information, Councilmember Olson and Councilmember Wink would be, I don't think there's anything going on now. So when you said, Councilmember Olson, that you think this would be good, I don't know what the purpose of it would, why you think it's a performance audit is needed only to go over what's currently happening, is, do you have some concern about what's currently happening?
Can I have the microphone? Yes, you may have the phone.
Yes, I see no reason to be doing a forensic audit. I think we've been given very...
No, I meant a performance audit.
Let me finish what I'm saying.
I was unsure you understood my question.
I did.
I apologize.
I do not see any reason for doing a forensic audit. All along, I have wondered about, because of the way they kept minutes, because of some of the ways in which people such as yourself have made innuendos and perhaps even concerned that there were illegal things going on in the way they conducted themselves, that definitely a performance audit of how this was set up, who is doing what, what the responsibilities are, and are they managing it in a way that is compliant as well as best practices for this kind of an entity today, given where we are historically. So I am in total favor of doing a performance audit. I believe the books are very clear. We also have a report that you disclosed last week about where any illegal and criminal activity stands with that particular investigation. I see nothing there to warrant any kind of further investigation on criminal activity or untoward financial sort of keeping. The books are open to us. So I would love to see this go forward into at least a discussion of deciding whether the merit of this. So I'd like to move to approve this item right now.
I appreciate your answer to my question. Thank you very much. I do not believe that there is any need to spend $30,000 to know what's going on now because of the actions of Councilmember Russell and myself. Over the last two years, we have made sure that it has been public and transparent and available to anybody on council, including the public, and I have no questions that the current actions are fine. I'm not willing to waste $30,000. It is not EEF or EMRF's money. It's our money. We really own this. It's just a little bit more understanding of how all of this fits together, but it's still our money, the taxpayers' money, and I have no question about what's currently going on, and I know that we can't disband it. So until we have more information on what really we would be looking for in the performance audit, or what kind of recommendations, or whether we'd even have any authority, I think that $30,000 would be somewhat of a waste. The entire situation came up prior to it being transparent, when they would not give information for years to open records requests, when an employee, our CFO, quit his job because he was so disturbed, because it got sent over to the district attorney. Those are the forensic audit issues from that period of time that we would need to know, when it was secret, when it was being withheld from council and the public. I'm not interested in wasting $30,000 to find out how it's going on now. I know how it's going on now, and I greatly appreciate that things have changed.
Thank you. Councilmember, well, nobody's punched. Councilmember Olson, I know you need to leave.
I do. It's not about that. I believe we have something on the docket. We need to approve it to have a discussion so we can have a vote. That is the next step. It seems like someone's trying to block this from even having the conversation about what he presented to us to vote on it.
There has been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, great.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the performance audit. Is there any discussion? Okay, then, Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. So we have been talking about this since I've been on council for two years, and I like kind of the perspective that this report or this analysis would give us, but I'm hearing from other members of council that this wouldn't work. So from the other members of council, is the only way that you would like this to be looked at, 100% only through a forensic analysis?
Councilmember Berentine?
Yes, I greatly appreciate the efforts the city manager has made and your predecessor and the predecessor before him kind of to go ahead and make this open and transparent, but there are some very serious issues that were brought up and that the citizens need to have resolved from the time that this began. There was, like I already stated, there was a pretty dramatic leaving from here based around some of the goings-on. The concern about the report with the district attorney is that during the, and the reason that I went to the district attorney, is that I believe that it became, it rose to the level of statute of limitations while it sat on their desk. And so we went to find out what their procedures were and what was going on with that. And then, of course, I've shared with all of you that once, because there was some personnel issues on there, it was appropriate to bring it to the attorney and have, at that time, I was told that it would probably, by the suggestion of the city attorney, be resolved by having a forensic audit. That was not something I demanded. Nothing was done. No secret investigations were done. The city attorney kept following up for, I think, almost a year and a half, and there was some staff change at the district attorney's office that caused some of the delay as well. But there are some concerning issues that were going on previously, and we can't get better if we stick our head in the sand and don't know what was going on. So yes, I don't think that the $30,000 is going to show us anything except for that we did some good things over the last two years, made it more transparent, and that everybody has more accessibility to it. But we have to know where this went wrong before, because this is a vehicle for funding that we have considered before and may consider again, and we need to know where the pitfalls are and the problems with it. And if something was wrong, if something happened, we need to know, and we need to resolve it. And that's what a forensic audit would do. This would just tell us that we've done a good job over the last two years and that people in the staff... people in the staff are doing the right job and that we're all being much more diligent on following up.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I have to say that, well, clearly, we delayed our decision-making on this so that the new members could, could have the information and get caught up to speed with what, some of what's happened. And after reading that documentation, I, I feel a performance audit would just be okay. I, I'm still in favor of a performance audit today.
Thank you. I, I will say that I am very concerned about this. As a matter of fact, the financials before were concerning enough to the city manager and the assistant city manager that they turned the information over to the DA. And I am very happy with how open and transparent the process has been since the new city manager has come in all of this. I am very grateful for that, and I don't think there's going to be a problem any, either. And so, I think the $30,000 is going to be a waste of taxpayers' money, and so I cannot support it. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I just want to say, I did read the report that came from the district attorney, and the last page of that said, we've looked at it, there's, you know, really nothing to see here, there's no further investigation needed. So, for those reasons, I am in favor of the performance review audit that's before us tonight.
Councilmember Berentine.
In all fairness, it's kind of why I went and talked to the district attorney about the report and what had happened, and that's not really what it says. It says that there are some concerning issues, that if it wasn't under the statute of limitations, that they would have gone further in the investigation, but since the statute of limitations was there, not that something wasn't concerning to them and of issue, but that the statute of limitations then prevented them. That does not prevent us from making sure that we clean our house and know what, what's going on. The narrative that's been expressed by several public is very concerning, that this is some kind of point fingers or blame or gotcha, kind of thought this council was past that. And they seem to indicate that they got that feel from talking to staff, and I hope that's not the case because I don't believe that they may have misinterpreted that because I don't think staff would give that impression ever about this council trying to just get information on what happened, where we were at. History matters, or you're bound to repeat it. And, and that seems, that seems a little bit of, of deflection. I, I think that the work that we've done to try and make it open and transparent is important, but you can't just let enough time pass by and go, well, now it doesn't matter anymore what happened. And it, it, it does. It does matter. So, I appreciate that you guys have done this, this changed from a forensic audit to this performance audit, somewhere in the mix of things. It, it changed from examining what happened then to only focusing on what's going on now during that process, too. And I feel a little, I feel a little thrown under the bus with that whole process, and I can't support spending money on something that I already know. I know it's going well now. What we needed to do was clear up the past, be honest about where we're coming from, and make sure we understand the history so we don't repeat it, and that's not going to do it, and I'm not going to waste a taxpayer's.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Berentine. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Wolf, E for, it appears, was formed in 1999, with EMERF being 1997 or the inverse of that, and we have not had an audit on either up to this point?
What type?
A performance audit or a forensic.
I don't know for sure. I'd have to yield and, and get more information about that. It is my understanding that no performance audit has been done. I am not sure about a forensic audit.
And so, what brings it before at this moment? What brings this before council?
Yeah, a couple of reasons. I mean, you know, one, certainly, I think some of the issues that have been alluded to in looking at some of the structures and how it created some issues with, whether it be procurement practices or transparency with these two entities. Now, we can solve some of that internally, certainly, but, but looking forward, and this is where a performance audit comes in, is to say, we know we have unleased parcels off of C470 for EMERF. We know that our cert, our certificates of participation on the debt on this site are ending at the end of 2022. So, that, I mean, it does, that's out there, but it's not that far out there. And especially if we're talking about looking at redevelopment, or how do we make sure that we're, we're leasing these spaces and generating revenue going forward, overall, utilizing these assets to the best of, of our ability to make sure that we're stretching the taxpayer dollar in, in both of these situations. I think it's really important that a performance audit provide you with some, some clarity on what are these structures now, not whether or not we're doing a good job, yes or no, but where do you, as a, as a body and as the city, need to be positioned in, in looking at our current, excuse me, looking at the current leases and looking at this, this area specifically for, for the, the end of the debt, the retirement of the debt. So, I don't think it's too soon for, for those reasons.
This was city prompted, then? This is staff recommendation that we go through these audits?
That's right.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink.
Member, or Mayor Protam, Russell, Member Berentine, do you know why it took the attorney so long, the DA's office, to respond such that the statute of limitations had been expired? Do you have any?
Councilmember Berentine.
I met with him in June of last year. I ran into the district attorney and was very.
You met him?
He was giving a presentation at CML. Apparently, CML knows him, too. So, he was finishing up the seminar, and I asked him, why did it take so long that I felt that it, that there was some concern that we only got this eight and a half by 11-page, couple of paragraphs that summed up a year and a half worth of, of investigation? An investigation that when we asked for, in November of 2015, when we asked for the books of the Inglewood Environmental Foundation and the McClellan Reservoir Foundation books, the city attorney, I mean, the city manager and the assistant city manager, the next day came to council and said, or the next day, they looked at the books and they turned, they turned them over to the district attorney, so the council never saw them. So, I, we were very concerned because they turned them over. They, they said some anecdotal things that were extremely concerning about payments and problems, and so they turned it over. Then, there seemed to be a.
Okay. Yeah. Well, there was. I, I, yeah. I'm worried that we're gonna.
I will sum it up.
Repeat some extra information.
Okay. There has been, there has been a call for the question. Is there a second?
I'll second. We already had a second.
We already had a second.
Not for calling the question. You have to have.
Okay. Right.
So, we will vote on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question? Vote yes. Those not in favor of ending debate, vote no.
I, I don't know how to vote, which way we vote.
Do you want to end debate?
Yes or no?
Yes.
All votes made. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Berentine and Councilmember Questa.
Okay. So, the question has been called for, and so, all in favor of approving a performance audit, vote yes, and those who do not want to approve, vote no.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show three ayes and three nays, the three nays being Mayor Protam, Russell, Councilmember Berentine, and Councilmember Questa.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Permission to leave.
Moving on to the mayor's choice, there is a letter of support that we would like to send to the Denver City Council. Actually, it is addressed to Cattellus Development Corporation in support of the Loretta Heights redevelopment and what the community group wants to do. Is there any questions or discussions on this? Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. As I know it, Loretta Heights isn't in Inglewood, so why are we discussing? What, I, I don't understand how this pertains to us or to what degree. I hate to say something that sounds out of ignorance, but I'm completely confused.
No, that is absolutely fine. They neighbor. They are right across the street from Inglewood, and so, this is just a letter of support for that. I'm going to let discussion go on because maybe that question will be answered a little bit better. I believe Councilmember Martinez was next.
Yes. I discussed this a bit with Transportation Advisory Committee. They didn't give it a thumbs up or thumbs down because there was no development plan proposed, per se, so they couldn't really say how it's going to impact our traffic or pedestrians or bike lanes, so they couldn't really say thumbs up or thumbs down. But I said I would keep them updated as more information comes available on the actual development that's proposed and how it's going to impact Inglewood's traffic.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
The meetings that I attended for this project, one is the historical issue that's going on with us, and the proposal to put Dartmouth through, which would impact the traffic and the high-density project that they are proposing on there because of the addition of the tower at some point, they believe that the zoning then was raised to that level, that height, which would be a huge, huge density. And so, Sheridan, Littleton, and Inglewood have been asked to go ahead and chime in because it's going to affect the entire area. A lot of the people, especially the historic value of the, of the tower and what all they're going to do, so trying to have some input on that would be worthwhile. You're right, it's, it is in Denver, but it would greatly impact the south edge, the south area. And so, asking for how they're going to do some of the infrastructure and, and kind of teaming up together to try and force a little bit more discussion on exactly how it's going to impact us financially and our quality of life and our culture here is, is important. So, I would encourage everybody to attend some of those meetings as they move forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wink, if you don't mind, I would like to make one more comment, or if you want to go ahead first, and then I'll make my comment after you do.
And I think you might be interested in addressing my next questions, too.
And it could be.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. So, two questions. Does someone have data that I can see that, that defines the, the infrastructure from, on Dartmouth, from federal all the way to Inglewood, and the traffic loads that are, that it supports? I'm not an expert in transportation, but I would like to understand what the addition of X density to that type of heavy-duty infrastructure really means for.
Did you have something to say, Mayor Berentine? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I didn't say anything. Go ahead.
I thought you said, go to the meeting, then.
I didn't say anything. Go ahead.
Let's, let's just move on.
So, I would like to see those who understand those pieces of information about what that, what Dartmouth can sustain if we're looking at that as a part of, of the consideration. And also, do we, is there data about in the way in which this additional density is going to impact our culture and our lifestyle in Inglewood? I just don't want to assume.
Right. Right. I do believe that the questions that you just asked are probably more related to the things that the Transportation Advisory Committee would look at, and because there is no development at, at this point, that, I'll let Councilmember Martinez go over that again, but they will not look at it until we have an actual plan, correct?
Well, I think to Councilmember Wink's point, that's what we were looking for as well. They, we don't have that information, so it was difficult for them to say, this is great, this is terrible, here's what we would recommend, because it's not set in stone. And I believe that if a development is proposed of that size, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there would have to be some kind of traffic engineering study as it relates to that development. So, I think once we have that, we will, I can bring it back to Transport, excuse me, Transportation Advisory, and they can take a look at it and give their opinion. So, we don't have that information, as far as I know.
Right. And I don't think that the community groups have that piece of information either. I have been to a couple of the meetings, and it is the, the neighborhoods in that area are trying to, they want to preserve the history of the landmarks there. As a matter of fact, I did give the goals of the neighborhood or the community organizations to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I do believe the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission went to a few meetings. The Historic Preservation Commission did review the, their goals. And this letter is really nothing other than supporting what these community goals were. And actually, Mr. Keck, I forwarded you the list of things that they wanted to do also. So, I'm wondering if perhaps we need to make sure that council gets a copy of the things that they would like. But the truth is, and we all know this, the developer is going to determine what they want to do. I, I think that I have spoken with the person that has headed up the community organizations, and the developer is amenable to working with some of their ideas, but probably will do what's most economically feasible for the developer. The only purpose of this letter is just encouraging Denver City Council, really, and the, the executive director of Cattellus, that we would like to see, you know, planning going on. So, if we don't want to bring this forward at this time, if you want to see what the community goals were all about, we can talk about that. Okay. Councilmember Berentine.
I think that it's extremely important for us to have a, a voice in the planning process, and so, we're not, after, after the fact is too late. And so, if we can kind of show some support for the goals, I think that that's important. It doesn't bind them, but it certainly makes them aware that we want to be players in the discussion, and after the fact is, is after the fact, and then it's a waste of time for them to just tell us what they're, they're, they're going to do. So, I don't understand why there's a problem and why there's a concern in just supporting these goals.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. The one document I have on it is just dated October 12, 2017, and it just has their vision, approach, their planning recommendations, and their community process, and an overview. Is there another document with goals that I should have?
Is that the latest document that I sent to you?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
That may be the only document that I have also. So, that was just their, their guiding principles.
Okay, and that's all I shared with Transportation Commission, because that's all I have.
Okay. All right. And that's really all that the, the Historic Preservation Commission got to, although the chair did go to a couple of meetings, and, and I didn't go to all of the meetings, so I was. And, and I didn't go to all of the meetings, so I was not aware. But I do believe that this will impact us greatly if they put a lot of high-density in that area. I live right off of Dartmouth, albeit closer to university, but there is a rush hour on Dartmouth. And there are certain times that we can't get out of our circle. So, anyway, but is there a motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead and support the community goals so that we can move this forward.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion, Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I would like to remove the part where it says, "The Englewood Transportation Advisory Committee reviewed the findings and recommendations of the community conversations process, and we're in agreement with the conclusions and recommendations." Just because that didn't happen, if we could change the language to a little more loosely, maybe the city of Englewood supports, you know, going forward with this project, but not specifically that transportation kind of supports their conclusions and recommendations, because that one document, I don't think, covers it.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, we could leave it the way it is, except for just remove the Englewood Transportation Advisory Committee. And, and so it would read, "The Historic Preservation, the Englewood Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the findings and the recommendations." Any other conversation? So are you moving that we, would you like to make an amendment?
I would, too, and remove Transportation Advisory from that statement.
Okay, all right. So it's been moved to remove that. Is there a second?
If it, if it didn't occur, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the letter of support as amended, removing the Englewood Transportation Advisory Committee. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to mayor's choice. I mean, I, that was the first thing, but I also just want to share, the Small Business Resource Expo was last Thursday morning, and it was amazing. Our Economic Development Department, in partnership with the Small Business Administration, is doing an amazing job. And I, I just, congratulations to that department. I'm excited about how the economic development piece. And they are holding a light industrial fair, I believe, in the fall to work with our industrial area, and so I'm very excited about that. I also would like to ask the council members here, the Chamber Gala is, is next Tuesday night, the 27th, I believe. I don't know if that's next Tuesday, but we need to RSVP. And Krista said she would RSVP for us. So how many of you would be attending? And I will just let Krista know. You already?
I already RSVP'd.
Okay.
I have my monthly meeting that evening, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Community meeting. It's Englewood stuff, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Berantine?
I'll have to check my schedule, I apologize.
Okay.
Is this the 27th?
Yeah, I think it's the 27th, yes.
Yeah, I'll have to look.
Okay.
Six to seven.
All right, so if you, well, just let me know. We can move on to councilmembers' choice. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. In the vein of congratulations to community develop, or community development for their fine job the other day and all the work overall they're doing in the city, the beautiful new brochure, the resource guide for small businesses, I was very excited to attend that expo, was it, an expo? And want to, to say, Mayor Pro Tem, what a wonderful job you did with your, your address to the group. I was very happy to serve with you. It was good. It was a very good event, very well-attended, lots of passion and invigorated discussion. So that left me on a very high note. I also want to congratulate our Code Enforcement Division in their fine work. And you know, I happen to have, for my monthly community meetings, I call them Wink Talk, and I, I invite different speakers who are experts on topics to come and present. And this month, I, the topic was Code Enforcement 101, and I invited Dave Lewis, our Supervisor of Code Enforcement from the city of Englewood, to present. And some of you are in the audience who attended. He gave a fine presentation, gave some good history on code enforcement, recent changes in Englewood code enforcement, talked about the role of code enforcement officers, workload versus the amount of staff members, their mission and their passion for their work. And at our meeting on Thursday, the, the second of the two workshops City Council had, there were certainly, there was certainly lots of discussion about code enforcement, and I could tell there was some misunderstanding or misgiving about code enforcement, which made me even more pleased to at least allow some segment of our citizenry to address directly, someone who, the supervisor. So citizens got to ask loads of questions after the presentation, and there was great discussion. I thought it all went very well, and I thought a lot of citizens learned quite a bit of information they didn't previously know about code enforcement. You know, part of my role, I probably said this very early in my campaign, but here on council is to help educate where, where there may be a lack of knowledge. I'm doing it for myself, and I want to do that for the citizens all across the city. And so I thought this was a positive step forward. And I was glad that code enforcement was a part of that. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I do want to just give a few updates directly related to district for, the first one is that Jason Park has the north side of it closed currently. And as for turf restoration, needless to say, it's been unusually warm and dry, and that's resulted in extensive turf damage, coupled with the dog use. The other parks that are available for off-leaf services in Englewood are Duncan, Centennial, the Northwest Green Belt, and the K-9 Corral. Jason Park should be back open by the end of May, is the prediction. The Easter egg hunt is not at Miller Park this year, although they've done great jobs at Miller Park. It will be at Bellevue Park this year, starting at 10:00 AM sharp. And if the weather does not hold up, it will be postponed till March 31st. So Saturday, March 24th, 10:00 AM at Bellevue Park is the Easter egg hunt. Should be very, very fun. Hopefully, people can make it. And then finally, Denver last summer approved a concert at Overland Park. Overland Park is just a little bit south of Evans, pretty close to District One. They have announced dates, which are September 14th through the 16th. And the reason I bring this up is that they're expecting 80,000 people over the course of three days, and there's no camping on-site, and there's not many hotels around there. So I don't see how that doesn't spill into at least District One, if not other portions of Englewood. So hopefully, we can capitalize a little bit off all the money coming in and maybe play a little defense, too, against all those people. And that will do it. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
The presentations that have been made over the last six weeks, some of that has spilled into conversation of council protecting the city manager, or that there's some kind of dysfunction going on. There's been a email sent out that's making it seem as if the city manager needs protection from council, and some of the comments that got made tonight, where it kind of ends up coming across to the public, and I think in an inappropriate way. And I would like to, what I've been asked as a result of some of these statements being made is, does our city manager have a problem working with his council? And there is not a person up here that I know that the city council, that the city manager has a problem working with. I do not know one city council member that has a problem working with the city manager. So I'm not sure where these kind of comments are coming from in some of these presentations. It's giving an impression that the city manager is opining to the public and not being able to work with us, and I'm telling you that that is not the truth. I, I don't hear it from any other council member. I certainly have not had any problem working with the city manager, and I don't know of any council member that has. So I am a little concerned about that going out there. I do not think it is fair to the city manager and the work and service he's done to this community to put him in a position like that. And I just wanted to give the opportunity, if the city manager wants to talk to City Council about any of those issues, or if you certainly ever feel the need to discuss anything with us, that you had previously said that maybe some regular executive sessions might be something that would be valuable, because I'm thinking that individuals may be taking comments out of context or situations out of context, and then putting it as though there's some us and them going on. And that hasn't happened with this council at all. And I think that you've worked very well with this council. And I think that some of the maybe well-intentioned misunderstanding on some of them, I don't think it's harm, I don't think they're intending to be harmful, but it's giving some people cause to ask me questions that I'm a little uncomfortable with, not sharing with the rest of council that those questions are coming up. So if we want to schedule something on a regular basis so that we have communication with the city manager on a regular basis, I think the previous council had said that we would try to do something to provide feedback in a more comfortable and private setting as an employee to, to make sure that any of those things can be vetted out when they kind of happen so that we don't have gossip going around in the community.
Thank you.
Maybe you could just discuss that at the mayor-manager meeting?
Thank you. As a statistician, one of the things I, I, I'm most cautious about is taking a few examples relative to the size of the population and making them a trend, or citing them as the majority. And so I, I'm, I'm worried, I don't know how many people have communicated with Member Berantine, but I would like us not to make a mountain out of what might be a molehill, I don't know, but just talking about it in this way almost makes it seem that there is a big issue and there, what's wrong with the city manager. And I, there are ways to, to bring things up, and I, that just cautions me, because I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes I get five, five comments from citizens about something, but I wouldn't, you know what I mean? In order to not paint it in a different light or a certain light, I choose when and where and how to respond to it, and I, I know, and five people is five out of 35,000-ish. Okay, talk with them, there are different strategies. I just, I'm just worried about how this is starting to look based on something that isn't true, maybe.
Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that. Councilmember Berantine, I don't want to get into moving on with this because the point has been said. So if you, if you have something else to add, there will be point well taken. We are past 10 o'clock. I mean, we're not past 10 o'clock. I don't want to go past 10 o'clock. Okay, Councilmember Berantine?
It was the presentation that Joe Anderson made about six weeks ago. And then there was, again, reference from a community that's working very closely with our city manager, and it's, and I don't think that we want to have it go any further. What I'm offering is the opportunity for us to go ahead and do the process that we had agreed to before, which was to offer a regular period of time when we did the review so that it wasn't just once a year, that's what we had agreed to. And the second thing was, I am not going to go ahead. I don't, I don't think, I, I think as part of our policies and procedures, we ought to make some really conscious effort about individual council members speaking to the city manager alone and some of that information, and about how we get information back from the city manager and his, and his interaction with the public. And we can do that as part of the policies as well. And I think it's very important not to let this get out of hand. Thanks.
Thank you.
And there was, I do hope that everybody attends the meeting on the 22nd, that will be here for the, regarding the homeless issue. I'm sure that it will be somewhat heated. I hope it's respectful. There are people whose very lives on both sides are matter that we all get along and can work together. I know that there's been a lot of effort to do so. It hasn't been successful so far, at least for that one little block. The rest of everybody seems to be getting along okay, but I think this is a very important issue for our community, and we really need to start looking at solutions instead of demonizing anybody, either the homeless, or council, or staff, or anybody, and start working for some real solutions. So hope to see you all there on Thursday. I think it's at 6:30?
Thank you.
6:30 here, yeah, in the community room.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I want to say thanks, everyone, for coming tonight and sharing with us. And I will be there Thursday, looking forward to that discussion. Also, want to thank all the community members who came out to our community feedback meetings. I think that was really beneficial, and we got a lot of good feedback and communication from the city, so I think that was really great. And thank you also for, Mr. Wolf and all the city staff who helped facilitate that. It was a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. And I actually do want to add one more thing, because I forgot to write that one down. I greatly appreciate all that you did to facilitate council and to facilitate the town hall meetings. Council got a lot of positive feedback from the community. They were excited that we listened to them, but it was to your credit that that happened. And we thank you very much for that, and all the staff input. So thank you. City managers' report.
Council, just a reminder that I will not be present next week. And in my absence, Mr. Wolf will be the acting city manager.
Thank you. City attorney?
Report this evening?
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.